Revitalization Phase Two Affordable Housing. First up will be speed limits, Mr. Finley. This was your desire. Come speak to us.
I think this is relatively straightforward and they go through it pretty quickly. This does three things. It sets the speed limit downtown at twenty miles an hour. It sets the speed limit on a residential street at twenty-five miles per hour. And it sets the speed limit in the school zone at twenty miles an hour. Currently state law says that any, any street that is otherwise, unless it's otherwise marked, is set at thirty miles an hour. School zone, unless otherwise marked, is set at twenty-five miles an hour. So essentially this ordinance suggests lowering both of those speed limits five miles per hour, except in downtown where we're suggesting twenty miles an hour. There are a lot of streets in Conway right now that are thirty miles an hour. There are also a lot that are twenty. There's not a lot of twenty-five. I've done a whole lot of that. Historically, we've signed things in residential, in residential areas as twenty miles an hour unless we did a speed study. We are, we're supposed to do a speed study anytime we sign anything other than the state statutory limit of thirty miles an hour. I've done one speed, I've done a lot of speed studies in Conway. I've done one since I've been here in the eight years I've been here. I've done one that warranted the twenty mile per hour speed limit and it was in those terms as the slow speeds I got anywhere in Conway. Never done one downtown. I feel pretty confident we get twenty miles an hour downtown. Everywhere else it's very commonly twenty-five miles per hour, sometimes thirty miles per hour, but almost always in a residential area it's twenty miles per hour. Yeah, so the, the purpose of this ordinance is to avoid having to do a speed study for every residential street. And a lot of neighborhoods that feel like they don't have enough speed limit signs. Sometimes they just want more and I can't put up enough to make everybody happy, but often those speed limit signs are warranted. And I can't do speed studies fast enough to put up the speed limit signs that people, that people want and need in order for the cops to monitor traffic effectively. So this, my desire here is to give me the availability to put up more speed limit signs so that the cops can regulate traffic accurately. If there's an area right now that is not signed, then their only choice is to use the state statutory limit of thirty miles an hour. And I've spoken with the chief of police and we both believe that that's too high. This does not prevent me from the, from being able to still do a speed study. If I feel like twenty-five miles per hour is not appropriate, I can still do that and set it at a different rate. This also does not apply to any street other than the three that I mentioned. So everything that's classified as collector or above, Ferris, College, Salem, everything else besides residential streets, this doesn't apply. It also doesn't apply to any state highway because that's state highway, so the state statutory limit applies. And we all, and that's why Park Rider is the only speed, the only school zone you'll see in Conway that's signed to twenty-five because that's the state limit. Everything else is currently signed to twenty. So really with, a lot of what we're trying, trying to do here is just be consistent. And all this, like I said, all the schools are currently signed at twenty. This just makes that consistent and illegal. And it gives me the ability to put more signs up.
I have a question, Finley. Can you clarify residential street? I mean, is it in the neighborhood? Is it out of the neighborhoods? I mean, I think that's what more people are confused about.
Yeah, so Chuck had sent me an email yesterday, I think, and asked me if he thought we should clarify that. The best way that I can think to clarify that is to add language that says. So Section One, Number One says twenty miles per hour in the central business district as defined in the Conway zoning map. For Number Two, we can put twenty miles, twenty-five miles per hour on any residential street as defined by the Conway Master Street Plan. Initially, I left that out because I felt like not everybody's going to look at the Master Street Plan, but there does seem to be confusion. And that's, that in my opinion would be the best way to eliminate the confusion.
Because just because there's a house on a street doesn't mean it's a residential street.
That's correct.
That's what I think nobody's known which is which and what's not. Yeah. What about like Arkansas Avenue, Broadview, those streets that are, they're not considered a neighborhood, um, per se, you know? I mean, it's the streets that make.
I think those are residential streets back in there.
Are they twenty through there now or twenty-five?
Well, anything, and another, another, another point of confusion is I have no intention of going around town and taking down stop speed limit signs and putting up twenty-five mile per hour speed limit signs. I got enough signs to put up already without changing out what's already there. So.
So if it's posted.
Exactly. Anything that's already posted, I'm not, I have no intention of changing it.
Even if it says thirty?
And that's listed in Section Three.
You're gonna just leave it.
Right. Because if it's posted a certain speed limit, that trumps this.
Right.
I didn't know if those would be switched out over time is my question.
I have no intention of rolling through the city and changing speed limits. I have no intention of doing that. I certainly have the ability to do that. I have the ability to do that now with a speed study. But again, this is, my, my goal here is, is just for moving forward to be able to add, add speed limit signs in places that are not, that are not signed.
Finley, let me ask this. I, I heard, I think, from five people, three wanted to leave it as it was. One wanted it to make them even lower and one wanted to make them even higher. All right. I think someone asked, they said that if you lower speed limits, it'll make it harder to get across town. Is there really a correlation between the speed limits and how traffic moves to that degree?
No, I appreciate that you asked that question. When I say a speed study, the way that, there's a national standard, national engineering standard for what a speed study should look like and how a speed limit should be set. And the way I'm supposed to do that is I'm supposed to measure traffic on a street. And I'm supposed to set the speed limit within, you're smiling at me like you just love this stuff. Supposed to set the speed limit within five miles per hour of the eighty-fifth percentile speed. The point is that the speed limit is never intended to slow down the majority of drivers. If, if the majority of drivers are driving significantly higher than the speed limit, then it's far too low and everybody's ignoring it. It's not doing any good. If they're all driving way lower, then the, it's not doing anybody good. It's not really slowing anybody down. It's intended to slow down the upper fifteen percent of people that are really driving too fast. And that is what gives cops the ability to enforce. I don't think Jawa wants to be pulling over every third person, you know? That's, so anyway, the, the answer to your question is no. The majority of people, I think, should be, they should be driving at the rate of speed that I want to set the road at. And, and if this would significantly slow down a lot of people, then I need to do a speed study because it's probably a road that, that isn't really truly a residential street and needs a speed study so I can set it appropriately.
What would Print Street be from Donaghy West to Ferris?
It's a major arterial, so this doesn't apply to that.
That's the question that I had from some people is let's don't slow stuff down on, on Print Street.
Unless it's posted thirty-five, you know?
Now, the other direction.
It's actually still an arterial going the other way.
Really even going through the.
And even through the neighborhood, it's still a collector, so still doesn't apply.
Can I talk here?
If you would.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, we don't need a speed study, I don't think. That's a waste of money. And you talking about slowing the speed limit, what, that, the speed limit, people speeding, it has nothing to do with the, the rate of speed. People gonna speed regardless. If you put it at ten, they gonna, it's, it's not bad. And we need to have a blanket effect on the city like we have. Now, I can go with the, the downtown and the schools, but for the whole city, leave it at one rate. You got people coming out of, at a residential doing thirty and get on another street. You got a five mile thing. Just leave it like it is at thirty. If you want to do the schools, I'm all for it. If you want to do downtown, I'm all for it, but don't make it confusing. Don't make it confusing. Leave it thirty like we have and it's a whole lot better.
Has this been brought on by a rash of accidents or what, what's brought this to the forefront?
Just that, I, I'm not sure exactly why, but there have been, there's been an increased number of people requesting speed limit signs and.
Because they're not there for a gas.
Not the speed limit lowered.
No, that's correct, but if I were to comply with federal law, then every time I put up a speed limit sign that's anything other than thirty miles per hour, I have to do a speed study. And as you said, that's kind of a waste of time to do a speed study on every sign I put up in town. So I would like for the council to agree on what we want the residential speed limit to be so that I can move forward with that.
And currently it's what, thirty?
State law says it's thirty because we don't have an ordinance that.
And that makes sense.
Actually, that's not true. There is an old ordinance on the books that sets it. Actually, does it, does it even mention the residential speed limit?
Yeah, thirty.
It's thirty miles an hour.
You're telling me, for example, and maybe it's posted differently and that would also supersede this, I guess. But you're telling me, for example, in.
Hogan's posted thirty-five.
In, well, in, in. Oh, Catherine Place, in Catherine Place. If there's nothing posted, it's thirty miles an hour inside Catherine Place on those little short streets. Thirty miles an hour.
Yes.
That just seems too high.
Unless it says, most of them say twenty in neighborhoods.
What, and I guess that's my question. I mean, are, are, how, I guess that's your point. You don't want to go marking twenty on every street and every subdivision.
Well, I also would, I, I also, we have a lot of streets in town and it is my goal for every street to be effectively marked. But if I miss one somewhere, then that means that every street except for that one in that neighborhood is twenty, that there's this other street that since it's not marked, it's thirty. And I get, I, I also, in answer to your question, Mr. Hawkins, I get a lot of requests from police officers that say, can you please put a street sign up here, I mean, a street limit sign up here? Because I have to, I have to control this as though it's thirty, but I feel like it ought to be lower than that.
Okay.
Like where?
Okay. I'm, I'm not gonna be up. That was adequate, but I talked to policemen and it's not the lowering. They want a sign to justify them pulling them over, not lowering it to twenty. They want a sign posted so they can say the sign right there says thirty miles an hour. That's what they're looking for. They not looking to lower, thirty is fine. And you thinking lowering twenty gonna make them go twenty, you're wrong. They want something posted so when you bring you to court, there was a sign ten feet away from you saying thirty miles an hour. That's what they want the signs for.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to putting up signs. It doesn't really make it convenient if we. If, if our opinion is that all the signs should read the same, then it would be helpful to me if we had an ordinance that supported that.
Okay, well, listen, we just had a city went through the same problem with the speed trap. Because when you get in the city, it drops from sixty to forty-five. Blanket effect, we got no problem. Blanket effect, we got no problem.
I don't think that's comparable.
Well, I'm, hey, it might not be, but I'm using that as. But you think we should have twenty?
I'm not getting into what it should be. I do know that what we're talking about is you're basically talking about inside neighborhoods. That's what you're talking about. You're not, not talking about collector streets, the major arterial streets and you're talking about. I think that with, you know, my kids playing the road, I'd rather be slower, but it's not going to slow anybody going across town. It is a safety issue and when he gets calls, it's to, it, by neighborhoods, they're not asking you to go to thirty-five. They're asking to go to twenty-five and he wants uniformity, so the default is twenty-five. If he has to do a speed study to increase speed or lower it, that he can do that, but this way it gives him a little bit more control and consistency in the speed.
Okay, I don't know how many calls he's got. I got thirty emails and ten calls wanting to keep it like it is. I don't know how many he's got. Okay?
But I don't think Conway's a speed trap.
Oh, no.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm talking about lowering it from one, if you're coming out of, out of Hathaway at twenty-five and you get on Favre, it's thirty. Have it one thing, one way. It's always been like that. And the problem is not the speed limit, it's the no posting of the sign. You can go down the streets now. It's a lot of them not posting. That's what the officer having trouble with. They get to court and they gonna, the lawyer gonna say, well, it's not, it's not posted.
And it'd have to be.
I know it doesn't have to be, but that's, you've heard them. That's what they use.
Yeah, well, they can complain all they want, but the law is the default and what we're trying to do is get to default, you know, more unified.
With a thirty mile an hour sign up.
So the issue is maybe the, right now in a residential area, the default unposted limit is thirty. And we're suggesting to go down to twenty-five. And so that then becomes the law of Conway and so that's what we would go by. And we're suggesting to go down to twenty-five. And so that then becomes the law of Conway and so that's what we would go by. So.
Part of the confusion, however, is there's a lot of twenty miles.
There's a lot of twenties around there. That, yeah.
There is.
So, there's a lot of inconsistency. Especially when you consider the fact that the, not only the state law, but also we have a local ordinance that sets the lo- the residential speed limit at thirty miles per hour.
And I, I don't have a problem going to twenty-five, but should we remove a lot of those twenties?
You know, uh.
The neighborhoods aren't gonna be happy about that.
The council would like for me to. I think you'd probably get more.
I have a little different thought on that myself. In the neighborhood, the residential neighborhoods that are, that are too residential, I know everybody says kids are not supposed to play in streets, but they're kids. And they're going to get in the street. And, uh, I have, I, I agree with you, David. I think anything over twenty in a residential area is too fast. Kids don't care what the speed limit is. They're just gonna chase the ball out there, do whatever they, what kids do.
But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be twenty-five on all the streets around town that people travel on all the time. And I know that's not what you're saying, but that's what people are thinking.
Right.
Cause everybody says it to me and I said, no, it's not those streets. It's mainly neighborhoods.
And I think once they realize that, they'll be more comfortable.
Yeah, we got somebody who wants to.
I don't really think, once it's, if you adopt this, I don't think people.
Ain't no math back there. Joe, we're talking. Okay. Thirty miles an hour on an average street, it takes somebody forty feet to stop. Twenty miles an hour, it'd take seventeen point seven feet to stop. Twenty-five, it would take twenty-seven point seven feet to stop.
That's good to know.
Forty feet is.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna ask you something. Have we had a problem with people getting hit?
Have we had a problem with people getting hit?
Mm-hmm.
Not, no more than you.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. Where, where's, where's the need?
I'm just giving you some.
He done said six.
I'm just, hey, I'm just, and don't, hey, hey, I'm just asking.
Whatever y'all put out is what I.
Hey, we still like, I'm just asking, all right?
Sitting back there and I did a little math.
Okay, I understand.
Y'all were talking about what's too fast and what, so I just wanted to throw out what, what distance it takes on an average street for somebody to stop.
Do you know of any problems that we're having with speed limit stuff that you can just pinpoint?
We get emails all the time and, uh, Sergeant Mush Rush will send us and we'll try, and the point working reps will try to get out there and enforce where we can.
Peters.
A lot of reps in town, so.
Yeah. I saw one yesterday.
One thing I will say is that, uh, there have been places where, uh, there's an exist, the way I've been operating for the last several years is if there's a neighborhood that's got existing signage in it and I just need to do one sign, I will be consistent with the neighborhood when I have that sign. And I will continue to do that. Uh, but in nu- newer neighborhoods, uh, that don't have any signage, I've been putting up thirty mile per hour speed limit signs. And I have yet to put one up and not get a complaint about it.
Yeah.
Cause that's the state and the local statute.
Well, two thoughts on this. I think what spooked a lot of people is line two where it says twenty-five miles an hour on any residential street. They're thinking that Salem is residential cause I live on that. Well, that's not a residential street. It's what, it's what's classified on our street plan as residential. And many of those streets, people live on Prince. That's not a residential street. So, that's what's scaring some people. But then to the, the limit, I'd be fine with twenty-two. I mean, we have neighborhoods begging us for all the speed humps they can get, slow traffic very. I mean, they're not wanting people to drive thirty and thirty-five. They want them to drive fifteen. Um, so, you know, anything we can do to lower those in these neighborhoods, I'm all for.
We can definitely clarify this, section one, two.
Add that designation.
Yeah, we can do that. We can m- mention specifically, you know, excluding collector streets, major arterial, that kinda stuff. We can define residential streets a little bit better.
Or you might just say residential streets as defined by the master street plan, just so people know.
Well, I'll just adopt. I didn't look exactly what that definition is. We can adopt that into the, into the ordinance to make it even clearer.
Yeah.
That way they don't have to search it out or it'll be in there.
Yeah.
Is there a master street plan on your website?
It is.
So, people can just pull it up and look and see.
It's gonna be confusion and.
And in the new pavement.
I know they're not.
Joe, wanna click on it?
No, if there's interaction.
No.
Right below.
It's the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can kinda. Be the one not getting bit.
And you said that every time you put up a speed limit sign, the federal government, what? Say that again.
There's a document called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's a federal document written by the Federal Highway Administration. It has been adopted by the state congress.
Okay.
So, it is state law. That document says that if I put up a speed limit sign, I can do, I can set the speed limit one of two ways. I can use a statutory speed limit, which currently means thirty miles per hour because we have a state and a local statute both at thirty, or I can perform a speed study. Those are the two options I have.
Okay. And then did I hear you say that you could do this yourself without talking to anybody?
Well, just, I meant by doing the speed study. I can always, that, that document gives me the right to do the speed study. Even, and, and if the speed study, uh, reveals an appropriate speed limit that's different than the state statute, that's okay.
How would you do a speed study?
I, uh, I count the, or I, I find out what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is on the road.
How do you know what that is? I don't know.
I use counters. I use traffic counters and find out what the eighty-fifth percentile speed is.
Okay.
Uh, and I can set the speed limit within a five mile per hour of the eighty-fifth percentile speed.
Is that the little strips that they put across the road and can, it obviously can tell when the first tire hits and the second tire hits and that tells you what the speed is? Is that?
Yeah, you put two tubes out.
Yeah.
With a, at a known distance and then, since they're at a known distance, then when the tires hit, then you can calculate how fast the computer is before you.
Okay.
Calculates how fast the cars are going.
Okay. I always wondered how they did that. Look at that. I've learned some.
Thank you, Augustum.
Yeah. Ernie Peters used to drop those on our, on Salem Road all the time. Or have them dropped on there.
Any further questions from the council for Finley? Anybody in the, uh, crowd like speed, speed limits?
Four and again.
Okay, thank you, Finley. Oh, I'm sorry. Step on up. Would you please state your name and address, please?
Sure, welcome. Thank you, editor.
I, I just had a question here. Uh, the, uh, online zoning map was mentioned. And before I came here, I was trying to figure out what is meant by the central business district. And I was looking at that and I'm wondering, is it the pink thing on the, uh, interactive?
I defer to our planning director on that.
I believe it's, it's, the zoning label C one, I think it's a pinkish color on. I looked everywhere to find something called central business district and I could not find anything on the map. Well, yeah, cause the zoning ordinance itself, C one is the central business district. C one commercial zones for downtown. I'm somebody supposed to read the ordinance.
That's what I'm saying.
And be able to connect it to the map and figure out which area is bounded by that. I'm just asking for a better definition of like central business district because I couldn't find it on the map. I tried to search for central business district and I got some places without them being counted. So, uh, I'm just asking for better definitions than just saying twenty miles an hour in central business district.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, if the, if the zoning map doesn't say central business district, we could add C one in parentheses to clarify that.
I can further define.
So then people would have to go to.
The zoning.
The map in order to figure out what's.
Where C one is.
They have to hide by on any street.
Let me, let me further say that the goal here is not to trap people. Uh, unlike, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think the cops are necessarily gonna be memorizing the limits of the central business district either. The goal here is to give me, is to help me consistently apply the speed limit. So that I can.
And I would remind you that the old ordinance setting speed limits is twenty in the business district anyway. We're not changing that.
That's true. That's true.
So.
We, we still haven't answered your question really though, have we?
Well, but I think the purpose is by, by having the definition be the central business district or C one, if that district parameter changes because of, you know, it expand, like say we do more on Markham Street and so it's gonna reach out and grab more of Markham. Or a residential street is built outside of where we are now, then it falls into that, you don't have to go back and change the ordinance every time you have something change within the city limits about that.
According to the map, that, I think I see C one on here and it looks like it goes from Independence, which is around Hennings, to the other side of College. And on, uh, from Hart Rider all the way beyond the railroad track. And I'm wondering, do you really need to have twenty miles an hour on the other side of the railroad, on, I guess, this side of the railroad track?
But it is that way now, right? So that one's not changed.
Well, I, I can help explain this a little bit on the, be on the, from the GIS map side. Uh, C one in, in our zoning district is classified as the central business district. Now, with going to transect zones up in the Markham Street area and whatnot, that of course changes C one to a CMU or a transect zone at the SP zone. With that, most of your, as, most of your C one, let's say it probably borders Faulkner and Duncan and goes south to what was the old college road bed towards St. Joe's. I have worked with, uh, Kim Williams at the Chamber and Downtown Partnership on some on creating map, different various maps showing the Downtown Partnership area. And that will coincide with the central business district. So that is something we could look at adding to our online maps as well as a designation. That might help. Just have a red, red outline, uh, just showing that designated area. So.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Do, we can look at doing that and just make sure that co- that co- that's what the council sees as the central business district.
Okay.
But that's probably the easiest way to make everybody happy and they can see, okay, here's the central business district. People choose to go to that set speed limit in there. So that might be the one to go.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Okay, we'll move to the second part of our meeting. We have Tammy Creason and Debbie Hart with Creason Development, Kiara Alukwin, Alukan, I got it that time, and Scott Grummer.
Testing. Can you hear me? All right. Uh, may I approach the bench and hand something out?
Sure. Sure you may, sir.
My stuff is gonna. Didn't quite make it to your packet. Uh, this is just kind of a diagram to show you in relation to what is being proposed, uh, and where the cottage housing project is.
Geese.
Geese. Thank you, Scott. Whereabouts? Oh, where the water is.
Thank you for, um, letting me speak to you today in committee. Um, again, my name is Scott Grummer. I'm a planner for the city of Conway. But I've also been involved in the revitalization efforts in the Pine Street neighborhood for the last four years. Uh, as you're aware, um, we approved the last council meeting, uh, the development agreement with Cottage Housing Project, which we've been working on for the last four years. Um, that's, uh, highly successful and we're looking forward to seeing the housing starts on that this year. So, with that, uh, just kind of a summary, uh, and I'm not gonna give, uh, I think I, I explained a lot of it, uh, in the memo to you. But basically, the Northeast Oak Conway area study that was done in two thousand and nine, um, looked at things in which can be done in Pine Street to help the revitalization process. And it li- lined out things that the community wanted to see. And one of them was improvements along Seaborn Morgan Road. And, uh, when they, uh, rezone that area to a transect, uh, versus the typical zoning that you see in C one and other types. Um, the T four is allowed for a little bit more density and, and housing development. So, uh, part of the process, whenever the city started acquiring land, uh, the purpose was to build affordable housing in the neighborhood. So, we're achieving that with the Cottage Housing Project, but what we're trying to meet from a dem- demographic standpoint is a mixture of market rate as well as eighty percent median income. Uh, the price points are a little bit higher. But partly because of the cost of development as well as the quality that we're trying to put into the house that came out of the, uh, the vetting with the community when we went through that process. So, this is being presented to you as a phase two. We put out RFQ, um, for, uh, development of the other property that the city owns. Um, developers stepped forward, uh, Debbie Hart, who's here today, and I'd like to present her in just a moment, uh, to share with you a little bit about her company and Tammy Creason. And what they're proposing is, um, an application to the state of Arkansas, uh, which is actually due next week. We've been working together. Um, but, uh, uh, the application is due for low income housing tax credits. And what that does is it allows the development to leverage costs so that we could get the, uh, the cost down on the property to the price point in which we can get better rental, uh, rental, uh, rates. So, when you look at other developments that are going on around the city, uh, I don't know if you're familiar with what it costs to rent a house or an apartment, uh, in the city of Conway. But, uh, the rental rates can go anywhere from five hundred dollars up to twelve hundred, fourteen hundred and above. Um, I looked at some housing, uh, new construction that's going on in Ingram Street, uh, by Shaver Properties. And those properties are being listed at eleven hundred dollars a month. And when you look at the actual demographics in the city, um, you'll find that the gross rent as a percentage of income, thirty-five percent. Um, if you spend more than thirty percent of your income towards, uh, your housing cost, you're considered cost burden. And forty point six percent of the city pays more than thirty-five percent of their income towards, uh, their housing cost. Forty point six percent. As well as fifty-one point two percent of households in the city earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year. So, it's imperative that as we're moving forward as the city and the city's developing, that we're always keeping a mindful eye on affordability and making sure that we're hitting all demographics and income de- demographics for housing. So, what this would do is with our cottage project, we have market rate and then eighty percent median. This would allow us to get some more market rate, but some sixty percent median and a few thirty percent as well. So, that gives us a good broad, uh, base of affordability. On top of that, it's also quality construction. Uh, it was lined out in the Northeast Oak Conway area plan and you'll find at the very end of the packet, kinda got it in there. It has some elevations and, uh, the elevation, uh, that was actually shown, it's that one right there. Um, this picture below was actually in the study and it showed row houses along Seaborn Morgan Road. It was recommended that that's one of the potential uses that could be done. So, the developers are proposing, um, elevation similar to that so that we can actually get some height on the development, uh, to create a buffer zone between Seaborn Morgan Road, which eventually over time will probably become a higher traffic, uh, road and create that transect into the neighborhood. So, it actually creates, um, a buffer as well as it gets that density closer to Seaborn Morgan so it doesn't go through the neighborhood that dumps out on Seaborn Morgan. So, ultimately, that's the basis of it. I'd like to introduce, uh, Debbie Hart, uh, to kinda, uh, share with her a little bit about herself or company and a little bit more about the project.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening. Uh, so as Scott said, uh, my name's Debbie Hart. I'm from Springfield, Missouri. I have, uh, I jokingly say I'm a recovering lawyer. I, uh, was in private practice for a number of years. I was general counsel for John Q. Hammond's for thirteen years. And I started doing affordable housing development in two thousand and eight. Um, my company has done approximately five hundred units of housing since two thousand and eight in Missouri and Oklahoma. This would be our first venture into Arkansas. Tammy Creason, uh, who is partnering with me on this project, has been in the affordable housing, uh, development business for twenty years and has, uh, in her former companies, done several projects in Arkansas. Um, we were attracted to Conway because we felt like, uh, there could be a real opportunity here to do some, uh, infill development in your more established neighborhood. And so when we, um, our first step, when we go to any community to propose a housing development is to meet with the city. Because who knows better than what you want and where you want it than your city. So, uh, we had extensive meetings. I think Scott was kinda sad the first day he said to meet at nine and we took his entire day. But we talked about different locations and we, uh, but all kind of came to the same conclusion that the Pine Street neighborhood would be a really wonderful place for our development. Because it would allow the city to leverage their already, all the resources they've already put into the neighborhood with, uh, tax credit dollars, which could show a meeting, immediate and, and impactful, um, uh, difference. So, the, as Scott mentioned, the tax credit program is administered by ADFA and so we would be applying for low income housing tax credits. Those tax credits would allow us to create an approximately six million dollar, uh, development. It would be forty-four units of housing. Uh, I think in your package, you see kind of a layout there. We did that, you know, in discussions with the planning department, talking about how we could buffer Seaborn Morgan from the neighborhood. And then we also create some scattered site, single family homes within the, the neighborhood as well. Um, the best part about the, the tax, well, there are lots of good parts about the housing tax credit program. Um, but in addition to, uh, developing quality affordable housing, that's also energy efficient because it doesn't do us any good to give people, uh, an affordable rent if they don't have affordable utilities. So, uh, this project's designed and will be built to the LEED Silver Standard. Um, and we try, if you all are familiar, you, you shook your head about LEED. Sometimes with LEED, you can get lots of points that are, I, don't necessarily directly translate to. Sometimes with LEED, you can get lots of points that are, I, don't necessarily directly translate to, uh, better utility bills. I mean, and, and all those points are good, but, but we try to maximize the points that, uh, on terms of insulation and high efficiency HVAC systems that are gonna necessar, going to be showing up on the tenant's utility bill, because we think that's vitally important. The other thing though, that is a positive about affordable housing, is the economic development that it, uh, creates for the area. And a six million dollar development that will be done within twelve months of start of construction is obviously a huge impact and it'll be a pretty fast impact. We are working with Salter Construction. Um, they're going to be our general contractor on the project. We are firm believers that you need to give back to the community where you're building. So we try to do that by finding local contractors to work with, and so we're pleased about that partnership. I don't know if you want me to continue just to babble on, or if you guys would like me to just, if you have questions for me, whichever, I, I can, I can talk a long time.
Scott, I know when you and I met and went through this, uh, one of the things that I think, um, I was pleased to see is the, after a certain number of years of occupancy, that they could actually then buy their, their home. And I'm not, you might wanna explain a little bit how that might work.
Sure, I'm glad to do that. Um, so because these are, uh, single family homes, not multifamily, they do come with a path to homeownership for the tenant. So the initial compliance period for AFTA or ADFA, I do that all the time, uh, is fifteen years. After that fifteen year period, the tenant would have, uh, an opportunity to buy the house. That doesn't mean the tenant has to. So no one gets displaced if they don't wanna buy their house at that point, but they would have the opportunity to buy the house. And we would actually work through our management company to counsel people on, uh, talking about what the, what it means to be a homeowner in terms of, because obviously while they're rental homes, we provide all the maintenance and we make sure that they, we keep them up. And, uh, when we transition someone to homeownership, we want them to understand what all those obligations are. So we do have a training part of, of process that's involved toward the tail end of that, that period, but you're absolutely correct. And I will tell you, just as a side note, on the projects that we've done that have been single family homes that have a path to homeownership, we, we really talk about that day one with our tenants. And they start treating those homes and acting as homeowners even during the rental period. And you see that in a pride of ownership in terms of people, they start planting perennials and they start doing flower beds. And, I mean, it's very exciting to see that transformation, but it, it's very meaningful and that's a very important part of the program.
I think it's also important to point out that, uh, not everybody can just buy a home day one. Some people do need time to transition into homeownership. So this does provide an opportunity for, uh, for multiple families that, uh, necessarily do not have the savings right now, but could over time, uh, get that saving. So I think it's a great opportunity. Uh, on top of that as well is just overall stabilization. The first thing I had to look at is how's the impact gonna be on the cottage housing, cause that's really the one that I'm really focusing on. But I see it as a value add, number one, because, uh, the more bodies that we bring in. Daughter. The more bodies that we bring in to, um, to the neighborhood, it means the more bodies that we have that can be, uh, uh, work within the neighborhood, can volunteer in the neighborhood, can help stabilize the neighborhood. As well as, as we see growth along Markham Street, having more affordable housing units, um, that are meeting the needs of our workforce. I think Arkansas Business Today had a, a headline that Conway's boom retail. Well, who works those retail jobs? It's service industry. Our service industry is actually on the increase with our increase in retail. So we have to provide those housing opportunities for all, uh, for everybody within the city. I think this, uh, provides that. But it also helps stabilization. Uh, it puts eyes on the street on the alleyway with the cottage project. So with the, uh, with the row houses facing into the alleyway on that, it kinda gives us a, an even more pocket fill in there.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Hart. Hope you enjoy your time in Conway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Beautiful city.
Okay, let's take a break till six thirty.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to serve in the positions you've allowed us to be in. We thank you for the goodness you've shown this city. We pray, Lord, you would just bless our decisions tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is now in order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Ms. Isby is caught up in traffic. She had to take care of some personal business a little right, but she will be coming as soon as she gets here. Four thirty, was she? You should have received copies of the March fourteenth, twenty seventeen, City Council minutes. Are there any corrections or changes?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to nothing. Next up, we have Tyler Winningham with the monthly financial report, which ended February twenty eighth, twenty seventeen. Mr. Winningham.
Not a whole lot to talk about here. Wasn't a great month for sales tax. It was only up a percent. January was pretty good. March is gonna look pretty good as well, though, so first quarter of the year ought to be pretty good for us. Not, like I said, not really a whole lot to talk about. All four of the major funds showing positive revenues two months into the year. Expenditures are all being held within their budgeted expectations, so other than that, if anybody, members of the council has anything they'd like to discuss or ask?
Yes, sir. I would. I'm looking over this, and you're gonna have to remind a sixty-three-year-old mind of something, if you wouldn't.
Sure.
A fund balance that's called unassigned with four million, six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in it. Can you help me remember that, please?
That, you know, used to, fund balance was one number. And then four or five years ago, one of the new Gatsby rules was, we wanna designate fund balance up into portions that may be committed for various things, and then whatever's left over is what's called your unassigned. So of our total fund balance, eight point six million, we've got those two commitments there. A two million dollar commitment to cash flow that was done back in the eleven, twelve timeframe. And then the two million dollar reserve, we built up over a period of four years. And then that's, the four point six is just the residual after that.
Okay. Thank you very much. That was a big number, and it was called unassigned, and I always like to know what that is.
That's the, you could call it expendable fund balance. Would be another term we could use for that. If we have any appropriations that come up through the year, that's where that's gonna come from.
But it's unaccounted for. I mean, it's not designated for anything in specific.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Do we like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the monthly financials.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to nothing, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. I'd like to recognize the UCA Journalism Class. Thank you guys for being here tonight. First up on the agenda, we have a public hearing and an ordinance to discuss the closing of certain utility easements located on Lewis Ranch subdivision, phase one. This public hearing is now open. If you speak for or against this, please state your name and address.
My name is Kenny Slusher with the Tyler Group at two forty Skyline Drive, representing Lewis Ranch LLC. And I'm here to answer any questions about the easement closing.
Any questions?
No.
Anyone in the audience like to speak for or against this? Okay, we'll declare this public hearing closed.
I make a motion to set this public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
I make a motion.
That was the, I make a motion for approval.
Yeah, okay.
I was, we are having the public hearing.
That's what I was thinking. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the ordinance, correct?
Yes. I make a motion to weigh the readings.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Garrett?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Garrett, please call the roll.
This be ordinance O seventeen thirty-one. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next up is our standing committees, starting with the community development. Mr. Hawkins, I'm gonna turn this over to you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector place liens against property at sixteen seventy-five Duke Street for incurred expenses by the city of Conway. The total amount of money here is a hundred forty-three dollars and twelve cents to correct some problems at that piece of property. Is there a representative of property at sixteen seventy-five Duke Street here in Conway with us this evening, either an owner or representative? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone. We have a resolution to read for this. It's Resolution R seventeen.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this revolution, a resolution, excuse me. Any discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor of setting this lien, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins? The next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting federal funding and appropriating grant funds for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Ms. Kiara, hi. How are you?
Good. How are y'all?
What do you bring to us this evening?
So the ordinance, we received our CDPG funding for twenty sixteen in the amount of three hundred eighty thousand sixty-three. We're simply appropriating the funds, and so it was actually laid out in the action plan and the resolution approved back in two thousand sixteen by the previous director. And we just, again, received those funds, and we'll proceed with the contracts. Currently, they're with the city attorney, and they can be, of course, whenever they're assigned, they'll be able to spend their two thousand and sixteen monies. And also, our fiscal year changed last year, so it changed from July first to June thirtieth. So the two thousand and seventeen fiscal year will actually begin July first.
I do, I don't see an ordinance for this. I don't see an ordinance for this in our packet.
I just see a contract.
I've got an ordinance in mine.
We just have our contract.
I have an ordinance here.
I do have an ordinance in mine. Did y'all, you do have one?
I do.
And I think she sent out a, something revised as well, so I don't know.
I can read the amounts to you, if y'all like to know what they are.
She said three eighty something, I know, it was, yeah.
Would you like for me to read something, or?
Would y'all like to know the amounts?
Yeah, why don't you just read the amount?
I'd be glad to do that. I'd be glad to do that. City shall appropriate three hundred eighty thousand sixty-three dollars to the following projects. The Pine Street area revitalization is two hundred forty-seven thousand forty-two dollars. Faulkner County Council on Aging Transportation is seventeen thousand dollars. Bethlehem House Transportation is three thousand dollars. Boys and Girls Club Transportation is nine thousand five hundred dollars. Faulkner County Day School Transportation is six thousand dollars. Independent Living Services Transportation is fourteen thousand dollars. Women's Shelter of Central Arkansas Transportation is four thousand five hundred dollars. And administration is seventy-six thousand twelve dollars. And those are the figures for.
I make a motion to weigh the three readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to weigh the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did anything not get funded that anybody applied for that didn't get funded?
Well, that's actually our previous director. She's the one who reviews all applications. And so currently, these are all going towards transportation, so I wouldn't be a hundred percent sure on anything that wasn't funded who actually applied for it.
I think this is what we approved through last year.
You did. It was the allocation. Exactly, yeah. So we actually received the funds in August, and they were not appropriated. So that's what we're going through now, so they can go ahead and receive that money.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Garrett?
This be ordinance O seventeen thirty-two. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Eight to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins, thank you, Kiara. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a bid for the scrap metal yard remediation cleanup project. And the bids were received, and Pruitt Enterprises Incorporated, the apparent low bidder, with a base of a hundred forty-seven five fifty-eight. Although their bid is significantly lower than the other four bids after review by FTN and Associates City Engineering. And the mayor, it's recommended that Pruitt Enterprises be awarded the contract for the Conway Scrap Metal Remediation Cleanup. And so I would move that we honor that request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the low bid. Pruitt Enterprises, the amount of a hundred forty-seven thousand five fifty-three fifty. Any further discussion? Okay. It is spelled differently. It is spelled differently, and you would be correct. Okay, there's no further discussion. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor of approving this low bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins? Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve FTN and Associates to provide professional services for the oversight of the Brownfield's cleanup plan implementation and final report for the preparation for the former Conway Scrap Metal Site. And Mr. Grummer, would you like to talk about this? Are you here? Yes. Thank you.
So we're entering the final stage of the cleanup process at the Conway Scrap Metal. What you just approved on the bid was the cleanup contractor that does the actual physical work. But part of our budget process was the oversight by FTN, who has been the engineering firm that's done all the cleanup studies and has done all the actual technical work behind the scenes. So this is ninety-one thousand dollars is their proposal. They'll be on site through the entire cleanup process to make sure that the soils are tested appropriately. If there comes across anything that meets elevation of soil samples that need to be separated out, they'll make sure that gets done. And they'll make sure everything's done to the state standard, so that when we get done, we'll have a clean field, not a brown field. So now, so, well, and I'll get to the other, I think, the other, but that's basically it.
I make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve entering into an agreement with FTN Associates to oversee the cleanup of the scrap metal site. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eight to zero.
Thank you, Scott, for all your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins? Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolution in support of the use of the sanitation tipping services as part of the match requirement for the Conway Scrap Metal Remediation Project. And Mr. Grummer, don't leave.
So as you're aware, we received a grant for the cleanup. The grant was a two hundred thousand dollar grant, and the city appropriated forty thousand match. When you look at the cost that we've had, everything we've done to date has been estimations. With the rebid, we got the contract amount for the cleanup down to one forty-seven. But with that, coupled with the FTN oversight, that puts us at a level that will exceed what we have remaining. So part of what we discussed early on was partnering with sanitation department to give back part of the tipping fee to offset our cost. In those discussions, I think the maximum that we can go is about twenty-eight dollars per ton. So at this point, we're not really determining what that amount's gonna be. We're gonna have to find that out once we get into the actual cleanup. But that will go to help offset the city's, the city's cost for remediation. So if you take the estimations of how much they're expecting to take out, along with the forty thousand match and the grant that we have, we'll still come up shy about four thousand dollars. Now, again, those are estimations, and that dollar figure can go up or down. But we'll probably have to come back and appropriate to finish out the project. But from the beginning, when we're wondering, what's this gonna cost, and will it be escalated all the way out to where it's gonna be a liability to the city? I think we're really crunching the numbers. We're really working it hard, and hopefully, we'll bring this thing in, and we won't have any major liabilities.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any further discussion? It's Resolution R seventeen thirteen. Mr. Garrett, call the vote.
All in favor of adopting this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eight to zero.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins? Next item, Mr. Mayor, is resolution approving support from the city of Conway to Old Conway Village LP for the construction of affordable dwellings located in the Pine Street neighborhood. This is one of the things that we visited with about at our committee meeting. And we have a resolution to read for this. It's Resolution R seventeen fourteen, I think.
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett, please call the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eight to zero.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins? All right, let's see. Mr. Mayor, the next item is number seven, and that is an ordinance setting the appropriate speed limit within the city of Conway Business District, Residential District, and school premises. And for this item, we have an ordinance that's ordinance number O seventeen thirty-three, I believe. And wait on a motion. Any motions on this? We have most of the spin rules?
Almost. Second.
Most of the second spin rule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's already on.
It's already, what we spin the rules for? Ordinance already on.
Oh, weigh the readings.
Weigh the readings.
Weigh the readings. Oh, weigh the readings.
Somebody do that?
We just did.
They just did. We just did.
You said spin the rules. You said spin the rules.
Yeah. That is spending.
This is the meeting. I'm still learning.
Wait, wait.
Do I need to back up and do something?
That's all right. You all right?
Suspend the rules, so it was to waive the readings.
Right.
So we're good.
With that in here, the wave, never mind. I'm good. Go with it.
It just, we're good.
Roll with it. Roll with it. Let's move on.
Now, I'm confused. Where are we? Now, we're looking for.
Now, we're looking at the ordinance.
Okay. We're looking for a motion for the ordinance. All right. Now, we need a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is this correct? Yes. All right.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion?
I would like to discuss, well, first of all, we need to discuss changing the language to reflect better residential and business districts, right? Do we need to try to clarify that now? Or? How?
Pass it tonight. We have to get the exact line.
Yes.
So I think we do want it to say.
What?
A residential street is defined by the city master street plan. That, have I got the right terminology?
The problem is, we don't even know with all those.
That's what I'm saying. I'm still opposed to that.
It doesn't really matter.
And so you're opposed to that, but instead of us fixing that, you're worried about that versus the safety of it being a lower speed limit?
It's not about safety. Have we had a problem with, no, it's not. Have we had a problem?
Let's go outside, and I'll drive twenty past you and then thirty past you while you're on the sidewalk.
Do whatever you want. Have we had a problem?
You mean twenty-five versus thirty?
Well, hey, I said downtown and schools, I'm fine. Downtown and school, change it. Believe everything, state law is thirty, so why are we gonna change ours?
Actually, I would like to amend. I would like to amend.
I would like to amend.
That's no reason. That's not a reason. We do it all the time, it's not a reason.
And people can't understand it online?
I don't understand it. I abide by the speed limit. Huh?
Wait. What do you mean? I don't know what you're saying.
It's not that he writes all.
That's what I'm saying. I abide by the speed limit.
Okay.
Actually, I would like to amend number two to change it from 25 miles an hour to 20 miles an hour on a residential street.
Okay, we have a motion.
From 25 to what?
To 20.
To 20. To 20 on a residential street.
Which is what a lot of them ask for.
In the neighborhoods, I think that's great.
Yeah, that's what that is.
There's no, there are other streets that he defines as residential streets that are not in the neighborhood.
So they have to be in the neighborhood.
That's what we're clarifying.
I didn't roll.
Things that are residential streets.
No.
Uh-uh.
No.
Things that are classified. Things are classified as a residential street on our street plan. Not just because there's houses on it, doesn't it?
What about England Street? What about Locust Street? That's what I'm saying. It's not a def... It's not a clear-cut thing divided, I mean, that says what's what. And people are not going on the dog on internet to find out what it is. The gentleman back there just said he can't find out what it is.
Well, then that's where we fix the internet. That's where we fix what we have, instead of where, I mean, it makes no sense to say, let's just keep it.
It makes no sense to have somewhere, it's, we don't need to have a confusion. We need to have a blanket effect.
And that's what it is.
That's what we're trying to do.
20 miles an hour.
30 like the state law says, 30.
Well, my motion, my amendment is for 20.
Okay, we go ahead, we just vote on it. If I get voted down, so be it.
Do we have a second on the?
Second.
You have a motion and a second.
Look, hang tight before we...
We're still talking.
Before we...
Any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah. Finley, I think we need to have some definitions, first of all, before we, before we vote on this as to what a residential street is, what's a collector, what's a, what's a... And let's lay all of those out. So at least the folks up here who are going to vote will know what we're, what we're talking about.
The best way that I can think of to define that is using the master street plan.
Okay.
Which is, I feel like it's easily accessible on the website.
Okay.
I can't think, any, I, I've put some thought into that. And just about anything else is messy. Because there are a lot of roads that kind of look like residential streets, but they kind of operate like arterials and...
That's what people don't know. That's the problem.
I'm not arguing or advocating, but it does say in there that a street engineer can put up alternate signs or the signs that are already there. So you're talking about Conway Boulevard. If it's posted 30, it's going to stay 30. Even if it is technically a residential street, it could be, it could be at different speed.
See, but we need to get out of the technical and agree area. That's what I'm saying.
Let me put it this way. I guess there's two courses you can take. You can leave it all at 30 by default and fix the ones down to 20. Or you can put it 20 default and just fix the ones up to 30 that you need. That seems a lot easier to me. So maybe fewer of those.
I think we can leave it at 30.
That's more confusing.
Fix the school zones in the downtown. I'm 100% for that.
And in the neighborhood.
Lower down around the schools and downtown. I'm 100% for that. But having two different speed, you pull out of Hathaway at 20, 20 miles an hour and you hit Farver at 30. People turning it off of Farver, I'm just using that, going 30 and then hit 20, it's not, it's not going to work, man. Leave it like it is, it's been 30.
Farver is a col...
Yeah, I don't understand why it won't work.
Farver's a collector, so that...
I know that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't want any residents to get stopped and they...
I'm hearing you.
I thought it was 30. Well, no, it's 20 or 25.
It doesn't need to be 30 in a residential area, is my point. It doesn't need to be 30.
And I think we're all in agreement, in a residential neighborhood, it needs to be 20.
And that's what he's defining.
But it's your own streets and your other streets.
That's what he's defining.
That's what we work on defining, so we can figure out exactly what it is.
And if something that, if something that is residential needs to be 30, then he can address that up to 30.
Right.
Is my point.
Yeah, and just saying that, because we can't understand it, it's hard for some people to understand, we shouldn't lower it. That makes no sense.
Another thing I'll point out is that I have a commitment per the same guideline that tells me how to set a speed limit. I have a commitment to set, to put a speed limit sign at every major intersection. And so most of these streets that you're talking about, like Farver, for instance, I have a commitment, the city has a commitment to post those. We don't have a commitment, however, to post every intersection inside a neighborhood. And so that's where it's helpful to have a, an ordinance that sets a residential speed limit.
I got one question I'm due asking, and we can go ahead and vote. How long have we had a commitment for you to put those signs up and have been put up?
Uh, I...
I'm sorry.
I don't know when the MUTCD was originally published. I apologize. I can find out.
All right.
On Salem Road going south from College, which runs, it dissects a neighborhood, basically. Bainbridge will be on either side.
Yes.
Is that going to be considered a neighborhood street? Or is that going to be a collector?
Okay, Salem is an arterial.
Okay, thank you.
Talking about country club that dissects Bainbridge?
Yes. If I said something else, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Country club is not designated as a residential street.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, country club is either a collector or an arterial.
Okay.
I think it's a collector.
And in neither one of those cases, would it be 20 miles an hour? It would be, it would continue to be 30.
Unless it's posted, that's correct.
I'm sorry, say again.
It's 20.
Because it's posted.
Because it's posted.
Because it's posted.
And there's police sitting in there.
And it's got 80 speed humps.
I see them all the time.
Would y'all like to hold this in committee?
No.
No?
Wes, let me ask you a question. Have you not gotten any negative feedback from this, from anybody?
I mean, a little bit.
No emails, no phone calls?
Only because they, the ones that I've talked to have misunderstood what a residential street is. And somebody said, well, what about Prince Street?
But we don't know.
No, that's not.
Unless we go online and look.
You don't know tomorrow, it doesn't matter if you don't know.
It's 30 is still too fast.
30 is too fast.
So I was just saying, let's not do it because we don't understand.
We don't have Palm Neighborhood, it's the other residential streets he's defining as residential.
Be adjusted up to 30.
Right.
Right.
They can be adjusted up to 30.
If the signage gets put up and all, it's going to be 20 until the signage gets up, right?
But there's already sign, if their sign is already up, then what's the difference?
Okay.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second.
On an amendment?
On an amendment.
25 to 20.
25 to 20 in residential areas?
Correct.
On residential streets per the master street plan.
Right. All in favor, say aye.
It's the ordinance.
No, this is an amendment.
This is the change. Oh, this is the amendment? Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now back to our original ordinance with the amendment.
Do we have the language correct on the central business district, which is not changing? Is 20 now is 20 in here? We have the language correct?
I would suggest that we add C1, either in brackets or in, with a comma, for further clarification.
C1 zoning district.
I would just say, it says 20 miles per hour in the central business district. Yeah, so after the, after the word district, I would just put C1 in brackets. That's what I would do. Is that okay, Brian? Okay.
I make a motion to include that change.
We have a motion to make the change.
To add the C1.
Business district.
Just to add the C1 to define the central business district.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're back to our original amendment, our original ordinance with the two amendments, correct? Okay. Do I have a motion to waive the three readings?
I think that's all been done. And there's a motion to approve it and everything.
I'll take a motion to approve.
We already did.
All right. I would, I would just make a quick comment that once we lower that speed limit and tickets start being handed out, y'all are not going to be happy.
It's a clarification of it all.
Well, the point is to slow people down in a residential area.
I understand what it is. I understand. Just be ready. Any further discussion? I like this, this is fun. Mr. Garrett, call the roll, please.
Ms. Isby?
No.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Ledbetter?
No.
I like this. Now, I like this. I have a right side. I like, I'm liking this. I'm going to go with the, with the speed limit of 20 in the residential neighborhoods because I'm voting for the safety of the children. That's just me on this one.
Isn't this fun?
It is fun. It's not personal.
We need the points we get.
Yeah, we know what it's centered to.
Just, just, and Joe Ro can go along with me this. In my years in the fire service, I've worked the car, I've worked accidents where a child's been hit by a car. So I promise you with me, it's a safety issue. Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Mayor, you've performed admirably under your first heat. Let's see, okay, we did speed limits, so now we're moving on to the next one. And that is, an ordinance appropriating funds for repair and maintenance of the city's fuel tank system. And we have an ordinance for this item. It's ordinance O-1735, I think.
I've got 34.
34, maybe. Hold on.
I make a motion to waive three readings.
Second.
You're right. To waive the three readings, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Hawkins.
I was just going to say, this is a, an accounting function, change, moving $5,200 to, to make this repair.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 1510 South Donaghy Avenue from R1 to a PUD. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on March the 13th of this year. And at that time, the commission voted seven to two to forward this to city council with a recommendation for approval subject to following PUD, or subject to the following final development plan conditions and staff recommendations. And those recommendations are listed below. Commissioners Jerry Rye and Justin Brown were the ones voting in opposition. And Commissioner Arthur Ingram was not present. It has to do, the, the conditions have to do with the external look of it being rock, brick, or cement fiberboard, no vinyl siding, 812 pitched roof. Garages can't protrude past the front of the house more than seven feet unless it has a side entry. Architectural shingles or metal roofs only, heavy landscaping on the front. I'm not sure what a heavy landscaping is, but that's one of the things here. Rock or brick walls and entrances on South Donaghy Avenue. Highlight front porches as much as possible, minimum nine-foot ceilings throughout. 10 are, 10-foot ceilings are preferred. Granite or solid surface countertops are required, and each home will be different. And with those items, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Do we waive three readings yet?
I'm sorry. That's my fault.
Make a motion to waive three readings.
Second.
We don't have three readings on our conditional use, do we?
It's not a, it's an ordinance.
It is a rezoning. It is a rezoning.
It's an ordinance.
No, I'm looking, I'm looking one hand. I'm sorry.
That's my fault. That's my fault.
We have a motion and a second to waive three readings.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion?
I do have, I'm for this, I got no problem.
Any opposed? Passes eight to zero.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, any further discussion?
I do have, I'm, I'm for this, and again, no problem, but we're starting to get a little tricky here on our conditions, where it says as much as possible, or heavy as opposed to defining, those are open to interpretation, which, again, stuff like this probably doesn't matter that much, but, you know, what's heavy to some person is not to another, and so we probably ought to get conditions more, a little more defined when possible. And this is the second time I've seen number ten, I don't have any problem dictating the outside, but we start dictating the inside of a house, that, that's, let's watch that slippery slope, I mean, we're gonna start calling for jacuzzis and, I mean, I, you know, it's just, I don't, I don't, I don't, we need to stay away from that, in my opinion.
David, do you wanna change something on the exterior on this?
Did you, did you put that in?
To make it in the motion.
And that's great, that's fantastic, nobody's ever gonna see it from the outside, and somebody could rip it out the day they move in. And so, to me, that's, and, you know, you can build them however you want to, whatever customer wants them, but, uh, man, that, that in conditions, to me, seems a little over the top. Um, but, I mean, you're fine with it, doesn't matter to me.
David, and I think that's a valid point, but I have a relative that actually got the letter from him, and it addressed that in the letter that he put to the neighbors, so...
Yeah.
I think in this situation, it's fine, but, yeah.
That's, that's fine, if he wants, if he's fine with it. I don't wanna, I don't wanna see us mandate that on anybody, though.
Exactly.
What the interior's gonna look like. Um, and as far as the, the, as much as possible, whatnot, I mean, I don't wanna sit here tonight and find what that is, but maybe going forward, Brian, you might ask them to try to find that a little bit better.
I mean, I'll, I'll point out, those were given to us by the developer.
Right.
That we could tighten those up.
Yeah.
Or maybe say something that's final approval by your staff, or something.
Like you said, heavy.
There's, there's a final word of what's approved.
Heavy landscaping may be through shovs, some people. I mean, you know, you just don't know.
Yeah.
And I agree with that, I mean, it's, it's for error.
Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The ordinance O-1735. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Eight-zero, mayor.
And final item, uh, here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit request to allow MF1 density in an R2A zoning district for property at nineteen-oh-seven Clifton Street. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on March thirteenth of this year, and at that time, the commission voted nine to nothing, the request be sent to City Council with a recommendation of approval with some conditions. There will be three single-family residential units maximum allowed on this property, all units must be detached, single-family residences. The primary building material must be, uh, cement or fiberboard. The driveway curb cuts shall have twelve feet maximum width, wider parking pad areas are allowed in the property, further into the property, and planting of trees at a ration of one per thirty feet along rushing circle. There are to be two-inch caliper at time of planting, per development review standards shall be required. And, uh, with those conditions, I move that we grant this conditional use permit.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, this conditional use permit, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eight-zero, mayor.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, that was fun. Welcome, welcome to the fracas. All right. As often, community development portion, next we have public service, uh, the first is consideration to dispose of fixed asset inventory, vehicles and equipment for the sanitation department. Mr. Hopper, you are up.
Good evening.
Hello.
Well, um, we've got a nice little list of, uh, used vehicles there, if anybody's looking for a...
Surprise position.
Yeah, we're starting to look like a used car lot out there. Um, so, uh, I know some of these vehicles were decommissioned prior to me coming here, and, and, uh, we need to, we need to move them along.
I make a motion, we just, we dispose of these assets.
Second.
Motion and, uh, second to approve removal of these fixed assets, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett, please call for the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes eight to zero. Uh, Chief Ledbetter, I actually drove this nineteen-seventy-five Ford, it took us some historical fires in Conway.
Yeah.
It wouldn't go, would it, Mark?
We still have another one out there.
Next is a resolution authorizing the Department of Sanitation to conduct citywide cleanups for the city of Conway. Uh, this is gonna coincide with the county, uh, and the county judge has declared April as cleanup Butler County month.
Yeah, so, uh, right now, um, we've got, uh, four sites planned, um, it's gonna coincide with the, uh, countywide cleanup. Uh, each, uh, there will be one site in each ward. Um, this time, we're, we're only planning for a two-day event, that's, that's what they have planned for the county. Uh, the E-Waste Drive will also be at the same time.
So it will be the same time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, E-Waste Drive will be held at our facility, or will be hosted at our facility. Um, in fact, hopefully tomorrow, we'll have the information out on the, on the, uh, actual cleanup sites, so, um, we wanted to get those out a little sooner, but, uh, we started planning late, so...
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, any further discussion?
And I think the E-Waste Drive is on the twenty-second?
Twenty-first and twenty-second, yes, ma'am.
Twenty-first and twenty-second, okay.
I believe the twenty-first is for commercial, uh, businesses, and then the twenty-second is for residents.
That's the one I got on my count.
Mr. Garrett?
It's gonna be, uh, resolution R-1715. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Zero, mayor.
Passes eight to zero. Next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Sal Architects, with professional services agreement for the tennis courts located at Laurel Park. Mr. Ibbotson?
Yes, sir. Uh, City Council approved Rick Sal, uh, Architects is our, uh, for professional service with the tennis facility. At our last meeting, we've met, uh, Mr. Sal's graciously, uh, gone away from the standard six percent, and went to a flat fee, uh, which has been very helpful. Uh, and we're asking the council to approve his contract.
I make a motion, we waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive three readings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the, uh, ordinance, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
The ordinance O-1736. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes eight to nothing, and, uh, trust me, this has people excited.
Yeah, let me ask one quick question, when, when do you think the completion date on the tennis courts will be? Do we have a clue?
How quick can you do this, Rick? Come on.
No clue.
Back there like, no, 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 no.
Just wondering.
But this year, I mean, this calendar year?
Good.
Yeah.
Must've been long...
So we know where to refer people.
That's right.
Steve, we're talking about built and playable this calendar year, right?
Yes.
Great.
Well, they're trying to tack you to the floor.
Well, he sure wasn't just...
What date exactly?
As long as the weather, as long as the weather cooperates.
Ten-thirty AM on...
Yes, I need a time.
On New Year's Eve.
They're asking about it.
And next is for your consideration, to approve the revisions to the Conway Expo Event Center and Fairgrounds, and the McGee Center meeting rooms, use agreements for the Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Ibbotson?
You, you all got an email, uh, with all of these documents, um, at least a week ago, I believe, and, uh, Chuck's office has been very gracious, and worked very hard on all these agreements. Uh, what, what I'm gonna propose to you is that, um, there's, there's some minor changes in the, in the Expo contract that allows us to, uh, at least take the deposit and deposit it, where we've not done that in the past, and it's kind of caught us sometimes, where in a show didn't go very well. Uh, we've come to you to try to have Chuck's office seek that payment out for us. Uh, this'll help us, if, if you're not able to put down the deposit, you, you probably don't really wanna rent the facility in the first place, so...
Yes.
We're also gonna ask that there not be a nonprofit rate for the Expo Center. We feel that, uh, based on the marketplace, that we're in, in a very reasonable, uh, position, fee-wise. I don't know how we wanna, if we wanna do this piece by piece, or if we wanna do it all together, or...
It's all together as a, to prove all together.
Okay, uh, then on the, uh...
McGee Center.
We've got catering documents in here, uh, we're not gonna limit our catering, we're just, we just want to make sure that, uh, they go through the process, that we know who they are, that they're giving a commission for the operation out there, and that they're current with their AMP.
Sounds good.
We'll also, uh, do that with, uh, some of the services that are provided out there. McGee Center was the one that I've gotten calls about, and I think some of you have also received calls about. I, we put that on there because there's rooms out there, we're charging for rooms, if you wanna charge for rooms out at the McGee Center, those rooms we can charge for, if you don't want to, we're fine, now, we, we can continue our operations out there just as they are.
I think I'd prefer that, and the conversation you and I had was, that was kind of the purpose of the McGee Center, and that facility, whereas the Expo Center and the new conference, and that, that is to charge people and make money and do, but, you know, I just really want the McGee Center to be a true community center. They've kinda already paid for it, and that was what was promised.
Yeah, people feel like with their tax dollars, they, right, they pay for it.
Well, we're gonna, what I would ask you to do is to approve the operating agreement out there, even though it's got a line in there for a fee, the fee'll just be zero, but it, it obviously gives people an understanding of what they've got to do.
Right, they have an obligation, isn't it, Karen?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve all these revisions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve? And that includes no fees?
Fees for the McGee Center.
Exactly, put zero in the line item.
The spirit of that years ago, when that tax was passed, was for that to be a community center, free of, of charge. So, I just thought I'd throw the old guy, the point of view. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eight-zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Next, we have our Public Safety Committee, and, uh, we'll start with an ordinance appropriating asset, asset forfeiture funds to the Conway Police Department for training. Chief Spadlin.
Good evening.